Good evening, I'm James Bell. Tonight I'll be serving as Chair. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for September 4th, 2025. The first matter of business is the citizens' comment. Any citizen wishing to appear before a regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission regarding any manner posted on the agenda was to sign up no later than 6:00 PM on the day of the meeting. If anyone signed up to speak, they will have three minutes to speak. Staff will time each citizen and provide a warning when they have 30 seconds left. Staff, is there anyone signed up to speak? Okay, thank you. The next matter of business is the approval of the minutes for the following meeting, the August 7th, 2025 Regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up are the zone cases. As a note, on your agenda that you got out, item 3.1, Zone Case Number 3527 has been withdrawn. Okay, so when we call up your zone case, these steps will be followed. We'll call up the first case and we'll invite city staff to make their presentations on the case. The board may ask any staff questions, but board comments and debates should not occur. The Chair will open the public hearing on the case. We'll then call the applicant and representative to provide any additional comment. The applicant will still need to clearly state their name and address for the record and briefly explain their case. After the applicant has spoken, the Chair asks for anyone in opposition of the item to speak. Those speaking in opposition should give their name and address and then speak to the board. The Chair will then ask for anyone in favor of the item to speak. Those speaking in favor should also give their name and address and speak to the board. After all the public comments, I will close the public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, we will not hear any further comments from the public. The first case that we will be hearing is item 3.2, which is Zone Case 0774C. Staff?
Good evening, distinguished members of the Board. I am Jamie McGar with the Planning Department and this is Zone Case 0744C, excuse me, 0774C. The applicant is Jesus Tejeda for Iglesias del Dios Vivo. This is a request for a zone change from Light Industrial District to Neighborhood Commercial District. Thirty notification letters were sent out and we have received no responses. The property is located west of Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard and south of 50th Street. Here's an aerial view showing light industrial properties to the east with vacant land to the north and south, and an unapproved lot with a recreational vehicle on it to the west. The current land use map shows light industrial zoning surrounding the property on all sides. The future land use map designates this property for light industrial use. Here's a picture of the subject property facing west, as well as views to the east, north, and south. Here are exhibits provided by the applicant showing the proposed building and building While the proposed change to commercial district is not consistent with the current industrial land use designation, the proposed zone change is compatible with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The property is located along an arterial street and the requested zoning district is appropriate adjacent to nearby residential land uses. The property is suitable for the proposed zone change and the use is allowed in the NC district. The proposed zone change is along 50th Street, which is designated as a principal arterial, and west of Pontiac Avenue, which is designated as a local street by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Staff has no objection to the request. I can take questions at this time.
Anyone have questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant or his or her representative here and wish to speak? If you could come up and please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name's Jesus Tejeda and my address is 9803 Waco Avenue here in Lubbock. I'm here to represent Mr. Rico. He doesn't speak too good English, but we're trying to get this approval with this change because we don't have the setbacks from Martin Luther, which is required of 40 feet, and the same on 52nd, which is 40 feet from it in the industrial part. If we make this change, we can only go 10 feet instead. We have 40 feet from Martin Luther, but not from 52nd. We have 23 feet available so we can make this work, this proposed building. Yes, sir. It's been a church for 30 years, so we're expanding, I mean, we're growing, you know, kids are coming up, so we need to build more building, add rooms for kids, teenagers and whatnot.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, I'll ask, is there anyone else to speak in favor? Again, if you can state your name and address for the record, please.
Randy Tyner, own the property to the east, represent RETOK, also own Tyner Metals to the east. I think you're voting for the property and their changes and everything. They're good people, don't hear a lot out of them. Only thing I am, I'm kind of disappointed that they even come to this because the city don't care about us on the east side, I'll tell you that for fact. I'm not trying to bash the city for that, but the corner stinks, we have no lights on MOK, and the roads are terrible, and I would have just done what they want to and the city would have never known it. So I'm voting for it.
Well, I will just say, we're not all like everybody in the city here.
I know, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling them not, you know, I wouldn't have come to the board to just do it and be done.
Well, I think that's good that you speak up for your neighbors.
Yep, they're good people.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? If not, we'll go ahead and call the public hearing. For matter of discussion, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Did this go before ZBA at all? Did they request a setback change?
No, because if you were requesting to vary a setback through the zoning board of adjustment, you would have to prove a hardship related to the property, which there would not be one in this case, and so a zone change is the appropriate route.
Very good, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, if not, go ahead.
Oh, no. I was gonna say, let's go ahead. I care about this.
No, I do too.
Let's vote.
I do. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven to zero. To let you know, this will be going to the City Council and the first reading will take place here in council chambers on September 23rd at 2:00 PM. Next case is item 3.3, Zone Case Number 3116-M.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Shane Spencer and this is Zone Case 3116-M. The applicant is SK Architecture Group LLC for JSJW Holdings LLC, and they're requesting a zone change today from Heavy Commercial District HC to Neighborhood Commercial District NC. The subject property is located south of 130th Street and west of Knoxville Avenue. We've sent 15 notifications with no responses. Here's the aerial map. The property is surrounded by vacant property on all sides with future Loop 88 to the north. Here's the zoning map. There is Neighborhood Commercial NC to the south, High Density Residential HDR to the west, and Auto Urban Commercial AC to the east and to the north across from 130th. Here's a future land use map and it designates this property for commercial land uses. Here are photos of the subject and surrounding properties. Here are exhibits provided by the applicant. And another one. The future land use map designates this area for commercial land uses, and this request conforms to this designation and would be appropriate considering the existing adjacent land uses and zoning districts, as well as the proximity to future Loop 88. Therefore, this request is in complete conformance with the comprehensive plan principles. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area, would not change the character of the existing development, and is compatible with the surrounding area, would not change the character, would not change the character of the existing development. The location is along Knoxville Avenue and 130th Street, which is designated as a local street and freeway, respectively by the Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018. Staff has no objection to the request and I can take any questions at this time.
Any staff questions for staff at this time? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant and his or her representative here and wish to speak? Again, if you please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Gabriel Sanchez, SK Architecture Group, 8355 Upland Avenue. Here to request downzone of my client's lot from Heavy Commercial to Neighborhood Commercial. The property borders residential zoning and is currently heavy commercial designation, allows for high-density uses such as auto sales, repair yards, warehouses, and light manufacturing. That would not be compatible with the character of the nearby homes. This kind of activities bring heavy traffic, noise, lighting, impacts, and simply do not belong immediately next to a neighborhood. Neighborhood Commercial is a better fit. It supports small business, like office, retail shops, restaurants, and clinics that would serve the community while operating at a scale compatible with residential living. This change would help protect the quality of life and property values for the families who live next door while still allowing productive and attractive commercial uses. For this reason, I ask for your support and help on downzoning this property.
Anyone have questions?
Yeah, so, I mean, despite what you said, like, I mean, this is going on the loop, so HC would be okay, but this is less intense, so what is the reason for wanting a less intense use?
So, there is gonna be a strip center is what the plan is, and so the setbacks are pretty intensive for HC. So, as a retail center, it wouldn't work, or sorry, as a strip center, it wouldn't work. So, the downzone helps us with buffers, but also, like I said, it helps reduce, because right now, zoned all around, it's a residential zone. I believe it's a high-density residential, which would probably be like for apartments or rental garden offices. So, this is like one little segment of heavy commercial along that frontage.
Cool, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Okay, seeing none, we'll ask, is there anyone else to speak in favor of the request? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. For matter of discussion, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second? Discussion? I think you brought up some good questions there. Downzone is never a bad thing in my mind, but very valid questions that you had.
We'll see heavy commercial and neighborhood commercial along the new Loop from now on quite a bit, so.
Yeah, that'll be, okay, let's go ahead and call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries seven to zero. Again, this will be going to the City Council for their first reading on September 23rd at 2:00 PM. Next item is Zone Case Number 3.4, or item 3.4 is Zone Case Number 3533.
Good afternoon, I'm Jose Villalobos with the Planning Department and this is Zone Case 3533. The applicant is Mountaintop Engineering LLC for Patel, Nimi Shaban B. and Babish G. Requesting to rezone from Low Density Single Family District SF2 to Neighborhood Commercial District NC. The property is located west of Milwaukee Avenue and north of 104th Street on 1.55 acres of unplanted land. Line letters were sent out and we received one back in favor and zero in opposition. Here is a map of the properties in favor, highlighted in green. Here is an aerial view of the property. To the north, west, and east, you'll see undeveloped land directly. To the south is a city of Lubbock Water Tower. To the southwest is the Leaden and apartment complex. Farther to the southeast and northeast are single-family residences. The current land use map shows the property to the west is zone Neighborhood Commercial, which was recently rezoned. Directly to the north, south, and east, the surrounding properties are zoned Low Density Single Family SF2 to the southwest. The zoning is Medium Density Residential. Additionally, there is more NC zoning farther to the south and southeast along Milwaukee The future land use map designates this area as residential low-density. Here's a picture of the subject property, as well as views to the south, west, and The future land use plan designates this area for low-density residential use. While the proposed zone change to NC is non-conformance with this designation, it is consistent with the principles of the comprehensive plan, given its location along the Principal Arterial and Collector Street, and its close proximity to other commercial zoning districts. The proposed NC zoning district is in conformance with the zoning ordinance and will be appropriate at the proposed location. The property is located along Milwaukee Avenue and is adjacent to nearby commercial zoning districts as well. The proposed NC zoning district is compatible with the surrounding area and will not change the character of the existing development. The property's proximity to Milwaukee Avenue contributes to the proposed zone change, being compatible with the character of the other commercial properties in the area with similar access to Milwaukee Avenue. The proposed rezoning location will be along Milwaukee Avenue and 104th Street. The Master Thoroughfare Plan 2018 designates Milwaukee Avenue as a principal arterial and 104th Street as a collector. Staff has no objection to the request and I could take any questions at this time.
No questions, but welcome to the staff.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Nope. Is the applicant or his or her representative here? Again, when you come forward, please state your name and address for the record.
Name's Adam Nixon with Mountaintop Engineering, 604 County Road, 7200 Lubbock. This is proposed to be a strip center. We feel like it's a good fit beyond the Milwaukee Thoroughfare, and I can take any questions you have.
Questions for the applicant? Looks like you're off there. Thank you. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? Seeing none, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. For matter of discussion, do we have a motion and a second?
Motion to approve is presented.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I think it fits on Milwaukee going right there, that stuff.
Yep.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries seven to zero. Again, this will go to the City Council on September 23rd for its first reading. Next up is item 3.5, Zone Case Number 3534.
Good evening once again, Board. I am Jamie McGar with the Planning Department and this is Zone Case 3534. The applicant is AMD Engineering LLC for Oakridge Development LLC. This is a request for a zone change from Low Density Single Family District to Heavy Commercial District. The property is located west of Oakridge Avenue and south of 76th Street. Thirty notification letters were sent out and we received three responses in favor and four in opposition. Here's the response map showing just one in opposition. Three letters of support were received this morning and three letters of opposition were received this afternoon and are not shown on the response map. Here's an aerial view showing a mix of single-family and light industrial properties to the north, single-family, multifamily, and light industrial properties to the west, with single-family properties to the east and to the south. The current land use map shows low-density single-family zoning surrounding the property on all sides. The future land use map designates this property for low-density single-family use. Here's a picture of the subject property facing west, as well as views to the east, north, and south. Here's an exhibit showing a mix of residential and light industrial uses surrounding the subject property. Not shown on the map are commercial properties running 82nd Street to the south. Here's an exhibit provided by the applicant showing the proposed zoning district. The future land use map designates this area for residential land uses. Although the subject properties are bounded by a light industrial use property to the west, as well as across 76th Street to the north, the area density is dominated by residential use properties. The proposed zone change to Heavy Commercial District is not compatible with the predominant residential land uses. The property is not suitable for the proposed zone change and the use is allowed in the Heavy Commercial District. Staff recommends denial of the request. I can take questions at this time.
Questions for the staff at this time? Okay, thank you. Is the applicant or his or her representative here and wish to speak?
Good evening, Corey Dooley of AMD Engineering, 6515 68th Street. I got a call from the owner of this property. Can I toggle back on this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So, they bought this property and would like to do something similar to what is to the north in the line industrial to the north. They'd like to do some form of storage warehouse, something to that effect. This is a property that was annexed as-is. There's some, there's obviously some non-conforming uses on here. We did not get the opposition letters that were sent today, or I did get lots of phone calls from neighbors asking about this property. Most of the phone calls that I had were positive. Some were asking what we were zoning it to and why, because they'd like to do something similar. They asked if they should try and piggyback onto this case, and so there's other interest in doing something similar to this in this area. If you've had a chance to drive through here, this is not a typical residential development. A lot of these uses, I mean, the current property is, got a hodgepodge of trailer houses, one burned down, I believe. They've been scraping it, trying to clean it up to do something better for this property. This is, this was, I'm not gonna say an ill-planned property, but it's certainly something that's older, and now there's somebody that wants to make something nice out of it. The Rutter's did something kind of similar to the northeast, built a nice house, but also have some industrial, not, I wouldn't say industrial, but some storage type uses as well. On the northeast corner, I visited with Mr. Rutter the other day, and it's my understanding he may have been one of those that was in support of this, as well as the light industrial next to them. I'm hoping that they were in support as well. This is something that I anticipate others following suit on, to maybe clean up this area and provide something that has a better impact on it than what is there today. That's really all that I know about the property. I feel like this will be a good case for some kind of a warehouse, storage facility, and I think that others could follow suit. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Dooley at this time? Okay, thank you, Corey. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request? If so, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Belinda Jackson at 7613 Art Oakridge. I've lived on the property since the ninth grade. What was across the street was supposed to be a single home. It was .8 acres, and right across the street from me was an acre that was only supposed to have one. They had trailer houses, unapproved. My parents and some of the parents of the people in here went up against to not have those trailers. And across that, where there's already storage, there's people living in those storage units. There's a lot of traffic, all the time, especially from Tesla, or people that have their businesses in that storage unit right now, where they're testing their cars that they're working on. There's kids down our streets, there's mamas walking their babies in their strollers, there's a school bus that comes down there. It's not a through road, it's a dead-end road. And the other part, I would say, there's plenty of undeveloped land in that area for somebody to build a storage unit someplace else. I'm asking for your mercy not to turn our neighborhood into a commercial area, because once one goes, then it'll be the next. And many of us have lived out there for years. We are second generations. Our parents are the ones that bought that property, and it was deeded that it would be a one or two-only place per lot. And we've dealt with that. He was talking about he didn't know much about the trailer houses. Well, the trailer houses were dilapidated and torn down, and there was one that did catch on fire because they didn't shut the gas off. But it was very low, there was a lot of drugs going on over there as well, and I'm not so sure there's not drugs going on back there, because there are people living in that, and I think that's not zoned for people living in storage units.
Can you say, where do you live in relation to this, or can you?
I'm right directly across from it.
Across the street from it?
Yeah, it's right there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council. Mary Mitchell, 7803 Oakridge. I live diagonal to the southeast of this property. Excuse me, to continue what Belinda was saying, this area is part of the, one of the last forced annex areas. We battled for over a year to not be annexed by the city. We lost. It was determined when they wanted to put the trailer park on the north end of this property. We all had filed a court case, or not me, my parents did, because we moved out there in 1968. And the homeowners for that 80 acres understood that this was a residential neighborhood, no commercial at all. And we found out during the deposition and every, the research for the trial, that the developer took the money, but he never filed the plat. So, we were all kind of stuck like Chuck. And we also learned that, and there was no consistency with the deeds. For instance, the property that I live on said no more than one structure of any kind on the front half of the property, and it was two acres at that time, but we could have 14 on the back, which makes no sense to anyone. The neighbor next door, Belinda, there said one residential unit per property. On Pontiac, the next street over, some of theirs said you could have commercial, but it couldn't exceed so many square feet. So, there was a lot of discrepancy, and because of that, the city went ahead and allowed the trailer park to go in. We also tried to fight the trailer park that is south of what was my two acres. It's the six houses about halfway down Oakridge on the east side, and we were not able to win that either, all because of the deed restrictions not being consistent. The problem that we, that I have with heavy commercial going in this area, as I understand heavy commercial, this is more than just storage. It requires outside storage too, things that could potentially be brought in by semis. We have enough traffic with the, the storage buildings that are down at the end, there've been numerous drug busts, we have traffic speeding up and down the street until 11:30, midnight at night. There's probably drugs being dealt there again. There were some folks busted for having a chop shop, and they probably have another chop shop down there. I've seen vehicles go down there to it, never to be seen again. As Belinda told you, there are people living in some of those storage buildings. And I know that that's not zoned for habitation. So, and as you were previously told, we have young families living in this 80 acres, and prior to what the gentleman said about cleaning up the neighborhood, these and prior to what the gentleman said about cleaning up the neighborhood, these lots have been in families for fifty years or more. A lot of them have. I was raised out there. There's another gentleman in the audience that was raised out there from a small child. Like Belinda said, she's been there since the ninth grade, I remember when they moved in. And there are still young families that are in their twenties with babies, and they're pushing strollers down the street. And we don't need heavy trucks driving up and down those roads. We get enough traffic from Tesla as it is. There are car haulers, if they're not blocking Eighty-Second Street, blocking the lanes on Eighty-Second Street, they're blocking Oakridge to load and unload vehicles. It's not fair to those young families to put them at risk. We have elderly people that walk the street. It's not fair to them. It's not fair to any of the homeowners to make it heavy commercial, or to even make it commercial. And as far as the street goes, if there's going to be heavy equipment, like, I know he said that what they're planning would be something similar to storage facility, but there are some things with heavy commercial, like heavy equipment repair. Those roads were paved by seal coat. They weren't paved with an asphalt mill. They are for light duty. It's not curbed, it's not guttered, there are no sidewalks out there. So the only place people have is to walk the street or ride bicycles. There was a, a young lady and her young son the other day riding bicycle, and he had training wheels on his bike. So he was a little guy. So I'm sure that you can understand our opposition to all of this. And I thank you for your time.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Sir, what city services do you guys have out there? You have water and sewer?
Dumpster.
No. No. Okay.
They ran fire mains?
No, yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
We have dumpster.
Got you. All right, thank you.
We've, we have also asked the police department to address the speeding issues. There's nowhere out there for them to park, other than pull over on the side of the street. And as I'm sure you all know, soon as you see a police car, you slow down. Well, as soon as they leave, traffic speeds right back up. We had problems with, when they first opened the, when Rager Dykes opened their business there, they were test-driving the cars, and I assure you, they were doing sixty, seventy miles an hour from the dealership to my house. Just as fast as those little cars would go. And even now, we have people drive forty-five, fifty, you know, loud mufflers, eleven-thirty at night. So, any other questions?
Thank you for coming and speaking.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hello. My name is Brad Jackson. I live at Seventy-Six Thirteen Oakridge Avenue. I am the third generation living at this address. I, sorry if I speak a little slow, I'm trying to remain calm. A lot has been said by my mother and my neighbor just now, and if I could have you take the perspective of your own city street, could you imagine being a third generation, second generation, and seeing what your family has built become devalued because of something unsightly across the side of the street? It's not something that fits in our neighborhood. I also definitely agree with all the traffic that comes from the storage facility to the north. They, we get a lot of traffic, but we also get a lot of mess. A lot of the trash that comes from that, actually, here, you know, in West Texas, definitely the wind blows and blows that trash up against our fence and down, down that street, and any more of that, man. But, other than that, most things have already been said. So I, I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time and coming and speaking about it. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Again, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Tasha Jackson. I live at Seventy-Six Thirteen Oakridge Ave. I'm right across the street from where A M D is wanting to zone this to be commercial. So I'm speaking for my mother-in-law, too. So she, her parents have built their lives on this property. They're, like, there's so much history to this property she has, and this neighborhood is just so peaceful. And when you do, like, a commercial zoning, that creates such, like, it creates more people, just more issues, like, people are just going to be in and out. And even in the picture, it shows, like, all, like, just the residential homes that would be destroyed by more businesses coming into the area. And as people have talked on it, too, that we have, you know, kids on bikes, we have people walking down the street, like, it, it is a very peaceful neighborhood, and we enjoy our little piece of property. It's our little reprieve, and, you know, putting, like, the zoning on there is just, I think, would just destroy a lot of lives. And that's just something that big businesses just don't see. But I wanted to kind of share my opinion on it, so. I'm hoping that it will stay the same, or just keep residential, because I think it would just cause issues by making it commercial. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition at this time? Case seen none, is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this request? Again, it's before, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Presley Robertson. I live at Seventy-Six O One Oakridge Avenue, directly across the street from the property. I'm a third generation also. I've, my grandparents have lived in that property for fifty years. My dad grew up at that property, and I currently live on the property. I am the mom who is walking her baby down the street. I've seen the city grow around our home. Our neighborhood is a strange area. If you look at the, where it is, there's a Tesla dealership at the end of it, there's a couple of houses in the middle, and then there is commercial storage units in the back. I live right there, at the storage units. I can see them from my bedroom window. I don't believe that there's drug activity going on over there. Maybe, you know, ten, ten years ago, it has been cleaned up since then. But I will say that my neighbors and I, we've all grown up out there, and it is, it is a, it's a strange area, so it's difficult to say heavy commercial would ruin that, and it might for some, but I also walk those streets every single night with my baby. And I can tell you that there's about four people that currently live on that block. The rest of those homes are either abandoned, or not necessarily abandoned, but people don't live there. There's, they've realized that this is not a typical residential area. And where our properties, the way our properties are set up out there, I live on one point seven-five acres for a single-family home. So it, it's, it's built strange. So heavy commercial would help all of us. I think that, you know, for me, my grandparents have since passed, and there's, there's not a lot left for us there. So in order for us to, to sell our properties and to be able to do that, nobody's looking at, you know, that area is just a strange area. So I am in favor of this, and I believe that it will help the community. I think that it will help that neighborhood, because it is a very, very strange area, and I, I'm in all favor for it, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Again, I'm going to say it again, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Chloe Shay Stanley, and I live at Seventy-Eight O Four Oakridge Avenue, and I am next door neighbors to the law in question. I'd like to start this by saying what Presley, the lady that spoke right before me, said. A lot of our prior neighbors' concerns that they've brought forth are things that have happened quite a bit of time ago. When you look at the picture that is taken there, a lot of the mobile homes have already been moved out because they have been burned or they were in bad condition, and at one point in time, they were really cheap rent opportunities that had really bad things taking place out of them. They have been moved out, they have been totally just gone. They're not there anymore. The storage units behind that, at one point, were a really rough neighborhood, and people were living out of them. The owners of that have since changed hands, they have repaved it, they have taken and put money into those buildings and totally reformed them, and there was different regulations. I have lived there my entire life, and I have not, in recent years, seen drug activity coming out of there, or the traffic that we had at one point. I'm also going to disagree with the traffic that Tesla gives us. At one point, when Rager Dykes was there, it was really, really bad. Rager Dykes was horrible to our neighborhood. But with Tesla, we haven't seen that as much. Are there car haulers? Yes, there are. But like people have spoken in the past, previously before me, this area is, like Presley said, strange. We have been enveloped with southwest Lubbock. It has grown around us, and we have not got to participate. A lot of these areas, like they said, are third generation. I am a third-generation owner, I own the land right next. It's my, my name. It was my grandparents originally, and my grandparents were the ones who established the nursery that is at the end of this block. I have a lot of memories on this block as well. Every single neighbor behind me I grew up with, and I know very personally. To sit here and have to have the favor and the opposition is very difficult for us as a community. I want to take this moment just to thank all my neighbors behind me for giving me the childhood that I had. But we are in a place of time where we are transitioning from the older into the new, and the city has grown around us. If we were able to be able to change this to a commercial setting, it would allow a lot of us third-generation owners that are trying to clean up our parents' land, that are dealing with situations where these were mobile homes, parents had plumbing services, landscaping services, there was a lot of reason to use that land. But now it's not there, and now our kids are cleaning it up. And we have homes of our own. And to be able to redistrict it, rezone it, however you want to phrase it, also allows me to be able to potentially do something with my parents' land. Right now, my parents' land is only valued at thirty thousand dollars. My parents have lived on that land their entire life, they have struggled. I'd like to see them get more than thirty thousand dollars out of it. If we do this, if we are able to have it open up to where some of us that want to sell, because I want to sell, I want to change, and so does my family, it allows us an opportunity that we don't have otherwise. There are not many families left on this block. In fact, the two biggest households are the ones that spoke in opposition, or in favor, sorry, opposition, yeah, before us. They have family compounds, they are well-established, they have their lives put together, and I understand why they don't want it to happen. But most of us are dealing with land and houses that are starting to fall apart. They've been there a very long time, and we don't have a use for it. It's right in southwest Lubbock, we would get the most gains if we would be able to rezone it and be able to have a chance to sell. Otherwise, it's just land that is running down and is sitting in southwest Lubbock. It makes no sense, when you go down our street, to see, people have brought up, we don't have city water, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have streets. And yes, it is a very peaceful neighborhood, because there's not a lot of crime taking place. The houses that are left are rental houses, and some of these houses are so old and dilapidated that people shouldn't be living in them. They should not be open for rent houses. And to start changing that changes that neighborhood to grow to modern standards, instead of keeping us in the fifties. This is an area that hasn't had a chance to really have development, and it changes the lives of a lot of families that aren't as developed, to be able to change over and, hey, let's do something else with it. So there is, there is a lot of back and forth that you're going to hear, because there is a lot of pride here. There are a lot of families that have grown up here. But now we're all older, I'm thirty-seven years old. I grew up on that street, I've moved on, I have children in high school. I do not want to keep this land and have to try and maintain it, I would like to be able to do something to benefit my parents and put my parents in a better situation. That's where I'm at, and I believe Presley, who spoke with before, she's kind of in the same situation. If y'all change this and allowed us a chance to redistrict this area that has been forgotten, it allows us to be able to, as families, have a little bit more hope. There's not a lot of activity on this street anymore. The children that were once on this street are now teenagers. They're my kids. The baby, she's perfectly fine, she walks, and she's not bitten, ran down by Teslas. We were just asking that maybe y'all see this from a different side. Instead of seeing this as an area that doesn't need it, because it's been here for so long, maybe see it as an area that's been here so long and so forgotten that it's time that it gets to join the rest of southwest Lubbock. Thank you.
Thank you.
It'd be different if you actually lived there.
I do live there, my parents lived there.
Okay. Hey, 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 okay, okay, okay. Stop it, stop. No, we're not here to have this going on here right now. If y'all want to talk like that, y'all can go outside, okay? We're here trying to have a public hearing, I appreciate it.
And I would like to say, I receive my mail here. I own this property, it is in my name, regardless of I'm there every single day, which I am, because my father is in a cane, my mom has her own health issues, I am their caregiver, I am the one there every single day caring for them. And to change that gives them a chance at a better future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? In favor, excuse me. Got me flustered there.
If I'm not signed up, can I speak?
You don't have to be signed up for this.
I'm Lynn Pope. Excuse me, my daughter lives at Seventy-Six O One Oakridge, I grew up there. I moved out there when I was in second grade, and as you can tell, I'm a little bit older than that at this point, so over fifty years. Across the street, when we moved in, it was a pig farm. And, you know, we, Pat Patterson owned it, he was a local police officer, he's a great guy. We didn't care about that much, you know, he, he kind of let it go. When they did move in these mobile homes, and I've gotten to get some mobile homes, the ones there, the, where it says MF Residence, there's about six of them, they're clean, they're tidy. This one over here, it turned into a mess, you know, like, you didn't know who was over there. We had some great friends that lived over there, some people that took care of my parents, and loved them to death. But we also had some people that you didn't want in your neighborhood, you know? And a part of the problem is, like they said, it is a very odd piece of property, this, this neighborhood is. It's a horseshoe, basically, and it's pinned in off Eighty-Second Street, there's no way to get to it from any other way. Mr. McManam, which is a good, he's a friend of mine, he developed, you know, the primrose and all that, but, so behind my parents' place right there is a great big huge, mostly dry all the time, playa lake. And so there's no, there's no alley back there, basically, so there's no access there. My parents have a dead-end road right there, and so, and it's nice out there. Like I said, you can sit out there at night, when the lake's got water in it, and, you know, there's birds and stuff, and it's kind of nice and all that, but I think the problem is, I'm not, I feel bad for the, I don't live there, I don't want to live there when, you know, my dad and my mom are gone. I think the problem is, is that the way the place is structured, Levi Rutter, he has a beautiful property in the corner over there, and it's kind of almost by itself, so he can almost, like, fence it off from everybody, you know what I mean? The problem is, I don't think anyone wants to buy my parents' place, the house is old, you know, they'd have to tear it down. And I don't think anyone wants to come out there and buy that property to build a home in, you know, although it's beautiful. The sad part for me is, is that I do know the neighbors that are here and have lived there all their lives, and I understand where they're coming from one hundred percent, you know, and I don't like the arguing. My, my thing is, for me and, and my family, is just like Chloe said, if it's just commercial, the, I think the property value goes up for us at that point. And otherwise, I don't know what we're going to do with the place if, if we'd, I mean, like I said, we could sell it for, you know, peanuts, I guess, and somebody could do something with the house, but I don't ever, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to develop it any further as, as it is now. The storage buildings were there, they used to be pretty rough, I get that. There's some more storage buildings, kind of, just west of that property, that they're kind of sketchy still, I think, at this point, I don't know what's going on there. But, you know, heavy commercial, like they said, a truck repair shop or something like that, maybe, you know, I, I wouldn't be opposed to storage buildings of some sort, you know? But the cards are going to fall where they may. I feel bad for, if it does happen, and the families that, you know, don't want to leave there, or don't want this to happen, I feel bad for them, because they are friends of mine. And, but for me, personally, it's not going to hurt my feelings if we zone this, you know, commercial, so, okay? Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
I have some handouts. There.
Levi Rutter, as mentioned quite a bit here without expecting it, but I live just northeast at 76th and Oak Ridge, have two parcels of land there. The handout that I've given, everything with the red border is currently non-conforming to the single-family residential zoning. Most of it was grandfathered in. I put some vacant properties that I know of, but, like the map that the city put together, they failed to point out a little bit further west where number three is. There's a auto mechanic shop there with several mobile homes and tiny homes, one RV that people live out of full-time, which I have nothing against, it's their property, I just pointed out to show the diversity of the neighborhood. The, as you can see, all the way through the neighborhood, you have non-conforming, seven, seven and eight are a commercial property with residential units on it. Oh, I have two number eights on there. The first number eight, second number eight, it has at least three residential dwellings on it. My property is unique, it's non-conforming, because we're allowed to run a business out of the shop that's on it. We got a variance for that, when my dad had the property built.
Which one is yours?
Some of the people that spoke in opposition, their properties are non-conforming because there's multiple residential units on it. But I, I think there's probably a middle ground here, is heavy commercial appropriate, maybe not, maybe changing it into an industrial park or light industry, industrial would be more appropriate, and I think getting more plans put together, some restrictions on the scope of what's allowed to go in there may be better in the long run. I have an eight-year-old daughter, we ride our bikes and stuff along the streets, we do have enough land, we can stay on our property, but we choose to come out to be friends with the neighbors, whether it's Lynn or Presley's granddad, he used to come ride his scooter to our house, and after my dad died, his dog actually went to their house, and Mr. Pope let her in and onto their couch, and it is a very family-friendly neighborhood, but like Chloe and Johnny and Presley have talked about, the neighborhood will have to get even more dilapidated, and the values go down, and the current owners cannot profit off of their property, they won't be able to realize any gains or anything to help support them. So I, because of commercial would increase the value and the usage of this property, or this area, I think something should be done. In the past, I've sought a zone change for one of my front lots, it was denied because it'd be spot zoning, but the lots, they're about twice as deep as a standard residential lot. I used to be in the water well business, so to have a water well and a septic tank, you have to have a minimum-sized lot to be able to fit both of them in there. And as was said earlier, there is no sewer service that is in that neighborhood, so you can't just divide these lots into smaller units and still make it where someone will come in and pay a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand for an acre to, just to tear everything down and rebuild more modern slab-built homes, so there's some issues that, because this was annexed, it wasn't planned real well. The usage is limited because of the size of the lots, how deep they are, someone would have to come in and buy out the entire 80 acres to redevelop it to be efficient, to meet standard residential neighborhood codes moving forward. And my dad was unique, and we bought the land, and then he tore down the house and built the shop, and we only tore down the house because the city said we had to have a bigger house on the land to build the shop, we needed to keep our drilling equipment, and so he decided to redevelop our parcels, but, yeah, I, I just think there's something in between denying it altogether and approving it, but I do think it needs to go commercial in the long run. If anyone has any questions.
I've just got a question, which lots are yours on this map?
Thirty-two and thirty-three.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there?
Actually, on this map, it would be very helpful if they can point out, like, where they live with the numbers, so we have a better perspective.
Perspective, right.
Who's there?
Do you want me to leave this map up and ask people to come up and point out?
Just point out the number on that map of what, where, where your lot is at.
Perfect. Also, I didn't send my letter back, though, is that a problem? Does that count? Okay, okay.
You got it here, you're speaking.
Um, shit, where is he? Right here, baby. Twenty-nine and thirty?
And if you, just to help us all out, would you say where you're at, whether you are for and against, I think we got it, but just so we can...
Okay, I'm 31 on this map, and I am for the rezoning.
Okay.
I'm number 20 on this map, and I'm for as well.
That's because they're both wanting to sell. Um, which way, which way is this? I'm 29 and 30. My son is the 20, I own the whole property, my son's in the front house, I'm in the back
I am 28. I used to be 27 and 28 before my mother passed, and I am definitely against.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. For a matter of discussion, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and second? Okay, guys, discussion time.
This is a...
I'll say, this is one of the strangest cases I've ever seen.
Me too.
Not had a case that I can remember where there was so much, or equal opposition in, in favor. The, the thing that I would say is that, for me, the zoning this heavy commercial in all of that residential seems like not a great idea. I do see everybody's position on both sides of this, but it's, it's just, it's a very unique situation, it, it really is, and I see, I see both sides. I think that, for me, zoning this heavy commercial in this residential area is not the right call, so I think, for me, it's, it's a, it's a no.
I agree, I think that's just too far. I think there's some maybe middle ground that y'all can work out, but I think heavy commercial is just too far in a residential neighborhood, especially where that's located.
Yeah, you know, the, the city's going to keep running into these problems, when you, when you annex, you know, a bunch of hodgepodge land that's not been zoned, not been, not been planned, you know, I don't know, I don't know how these other lots around them got light industrial, to be honest, I don't know, I don't know where those came...
That's just the land use, it is all zoned SF2.
Okay, I misunderstood, so, I mean, we, we've seen this, but we've seen this a ton of times, where they, where they bring things into the city that, and they're all non-conforming because it's all SF2.
Yeah, and this is strange, because it's already in the middle of the city, really, kind of...
Yeah, I mean, I, I understand, I'm not, I'm not certain that making this commercial is going to improve the land values around there, I, I just, I, I don't think the math is there, but, and I don't believe that this is a good idea to go as far as heavy commercial. Something, 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 I mean, commercial, but maybe not that far, but I don't know, I think, I think this is, in my opinion, this is going to infill eventually residential, I think it will, given time, and I, and I, I know that not everybody has that kind of time, but, I mean, with all the residential around it, as hot as Milwaukee is, I think somebody will come in and buy it all, and, and, I mean, if, if they do something as simple as turn it into, you know, a mobile home, or...
Well, either that, or if somebody...
A big, big mobile home park.
Or if somebody came in altogether and wanted to turn it all to commercial, where it's not just, where it's not hodgepodge.
Yeah, that's the thing about it, is, is, I'm dealing with some other issues on some, on some land that I'm working on, and, and, and it's not far from here, and this has been the problem with this part of the city, is that there's no infrastructure here, other than the city is required to put in, I guess, fire hydrants. So they, so they run fire hydrants, they run water lines for fire hydrants, but I mean, whoever, this is going to take somebody that buys it all as a big block to run the infrastructure, and otherwise, you're not going to be able to, you're not going to be able to afford to do this in development. You'd know more about that than I would.
Well, thanks for passing the ball over to me, Scott. Yeah, I hear a lot of great, passionate stories and, and arguments and well-founded reasoning both ways, and I agree with Tanner, I think this is an extremely unique part of the city, it's an extremely unique case. The way I look at it is, I don't, I don't, I don't think someone's going to come in here and probably do residential, I think that y'all are going to want too much for it, for a residential developer to come in and buy this whole thing and turn it into lots and put that infrastructure in. There's also a lot of demonstration of light industrial uses already, whether or not we agreed to them, they were there prior, and, you know, we're, we're kind of having to live with them already, and I think that's starting to demonstrate somewhat of a precedence of this area turning from residential to other uses. I don't think, I can't see from this map any new residential being built in this area, but there has been some light industrial, I guess, uses come in more recently. So therefore, I kind of lean, I, I agree with heavy commercial's not the right use, that doesn't feel right, I think that's too loose, I also think the lack of utilities is going to prevent truly anything major, heavy commercial to come in, honestly. It's probably going to have to be kind of a storage-type facility, something that doesn't have a lot of water usage. So therefore, I don't know if maybe light industrial might perhaps be a more amenable use for everybody, and I don't know if that's something that the applicant would be open to exploring or not, I don't know, Corey, you want to come up and address my kind of comments on that, what your thoughts are?
But light industrial's even a heavier, heavier zoning than the heavy commercial. There's more allowances there than the heavy commercial.
I apologize, say that again.
I said, going to light industrial's even got more heavy uses than heavy commercial.
That's correct. You, if, if that was something you wanted to entertain, that could not be done tonight.
No, I'm not just saying, but he just brought that up, I'm just saying, that's even increasing it more.
Kristen, is there a down zone that we could do that would allow for shops, office warehouse, storage-type facility, or is heavy commercial it?
You need the heavy commercial for the shops, office warehouse, if you were doing only self-storage, that could be auto-urban commercial or neighborhood commercial, but it wouldn't allow the shops, yeah.
I, I feel like that's probably the direction they want to go, I feel like that's probably the direction that the neighbors want to go, I agree, I think that this is going to be something you're going to see more of. You know, I, I deal with, with land development and residential development all day, every day, and this is a non-starter for redeveloping a single-family residential, and so it's either going to stay like it is, going in with a mobile home park is, is not going to be possible. I, I get asked that question a lot from people, and I, I can't see a scenario where that would work out here, or really anywhere inside the city of Lubbock. Have we had a, a mobile home park developed inside the city limits, Kristen, since you've been at the city?
Not, not recently, I mean, I know of one that was in existence that wanted to expand, I mean, that's the only new one I can think of.
There's a lot of hurdles to that that make it virtually impossible.
I didn't mean to suggest that, that, that that's a, I just, my whole point was that heavy commercial's a reach, and I think, I think that's too, not restrictive enough.
Yeah. It, it, it sounds a lot, lot worse, I think, and you just read light industrial and you think, okay, well, that's, that's a lot better, let's go with that, and the wording may be a little rougher than the actual intended use.
Yeah, heavy commercial sounds...
It does, it sounds worse than it is.
It sounds worse than light industrial when it's really the opposite way.
But I, I feel like you would see a lot of dominoes start to fall with this, and you would see more of a redevelopment of this area and maybe a, a better use, I mean, I drive by one of these types of facilities off of 66th Street, just east of Alco, every day, and somebody took that property and made it into a great project, it's, doesn't have a lot of activity outside of 8:00 to 5:00, and so it's, it's, it's been a good neighbor to the residential areas around it, I, I don't see any issues with it, and I live right across from it, so I see something similar to this taking place, it's just going to take that first domino to fall.
Kristen? Got a question for you. The items that were already light industrial in there, were they pre-existing before they were annexed? So they're basically grandfathered, so it's not anything that's come in since they've been annexed?
No.
It's all listed, they went out there before they were annexed, before we were annexed.
So, okay, that was a question, so we haven't changed any zoning for anything that was there, everything was already...
Correct, it's all SF2, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Are y'all ready to call the vote? All in favor of some case, 3534, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails, 1 to 6. This still will go to City Council for the first reading on September 23rd. This still will go to City Council for the first reading on September 23rd. Okay, that's the end for the zone cases. Up next is our other business. This is not a public hearing. Be item 4.1.
Hello, Board. I'm Greg Kornadis with the Planning Department. And this is a request to waive the screening fence requirement to the east on a property-zoned auto-urban commercial district, formerly general retail district, um, which is adjacent to a property-zoned high-density residential district, formerly apartment medical district. The applicant is Collier Construction for Prosperity Bank, located at 10909 Slide Road. Here's a picture showing where the screening fence would be required. And then here's pictures of the property, uh, to the north, as well as views to the south, west, and east. And that's really all we have for, to present for you guys.
I guess it's the applicant gonna be here to speak, so I'm gonna have a couple of questions.
The applicant is here?
Good evening. Scott Collier, 2202 Avenue E here in Lubbock. Good evening. We did construct both properties, actually. Uh, we constructed the Prosperity Bank, and we constructed the Primrose, uh, daycare behind it. In walking the site after we completed the bank, the, the bank executive did ask, you know, are we complete? And I said, other than the screening fence? And he asked why we're building a screening fence? And it's, it's part of code. It's, it's required. And he said, I'd like to eliminate the screening fence if the neighbor is agreeable to it. So I asked the Primrose owner, and she's like, I like seeing the green space between me and the bank property. So that's the reason I'm here today, is to formally ask that, that, that screening fence not be required to be constructed, uh, for both owners. Be glad to answer any questions.
And I guess one of the questions is, and I know it's next door, they have a car wash to you. How come they didn't have to have a screening fence?
They are developed under the current code, which requires a landscape buffer yard, which they are installing.
Okay. And so this was-
Two different codes.
Because it was platted at a different time?
Yes. This property was platted prior to October 1st, 2023, when the Unified Development Code went into effect. So they have vested rights under state law that allow them to develop using the code that was in place when they platted the property. Or they could have always opted into the current code, but they chose to use the former code.
Okay. Questions?
So the car wash is on 10-8-11?
It is north of the bank.
Yeah, it's just north of it.
Okay. And then the, um, where that red square is, is the only portion that you're requesting not to have a fence? What about the other one, to the north of that?
The property to the north is the car wash?
Is the car wash?
No, no, no. Like, you said the car wash is north of the bank, right?
Right. The bank's on the corner.
There's two properties on the west, but you only have the screening fence on one?
Only 10909 would be requiring the screening fence, because they're using the previous code. The property to the north, the car wash, is using the current code, which doesn't require the screening fence. So that's why it's only that portion that's required. Does that make sense?
So basically, the car wash has a buffer yard more so, right?
Right. Their buffer yard is canopy trees and ornamental trees.
And this one doesn't have, wouldn't have to have anything if they don't have the screening fence.
Correct.
Collier, it's, it's hard to see, it's hard to tell what's there from the pictures, what's, what's there now in between.
On, on the Primrose side of the property is, is some evergreen trees. There's some pine trees. There's some cedar elms right there. And then there is a, uh, ornamental fence that really surrounds their playground, that keeps the kids in. Uh, it is a see-through fence. And then on the bank side is just irrigated sod.
So, kind of a buffer yard, but not, not quite code, new code.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good with that. So is there any way that it could go to landscaping? Instead of the...
Fence.
The fence?
No. Because the landscaping is a requirement under the current code, and they developed under the former code. So unfortunately, the board could not require landscaping in place of the fence. Your, your only option would be to waive the fence, allow it to be a shorter height, things like that.
Okay. Cause I see if we do that, I see that happening all the time. People are gonna start coming and saying, can they waive those things?
This is just because it was platted on the, before the UDC.
You really, even, you know, this was an option even before our current code. And, and it was rare that we saw these requests.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the neighbor is okay with not having the fence?
Yes, sir. I, I, I brought an email from Jay Lynn saying that she's, she's agreeable. She, she preferred not to have a fence.
We've got it down here, Tarek, if you wanna see it. Okay, so we're, we're just, we're just talking about removing a fence or not today?
Yes. That's it. They're required a six-foot solid wood or masonry fence.
But because there's no hardship, this is not before ZBA or the department can't make this decision?
Because our former code required this specific item, for whatever reason, to come to this commission.
Understood. Thanks.
Yeah, that-
That's what it's saying. North view shows the split between the properties. That's looking down the line.
Yes.
So you really gotta see, Primrose has got the trees on theirs, right? And then you've got down where the car wash is, they have trees. The only difference is that y'all don't have trees. Y'all are just wanting to say, no fence, and just have the grass.
Yeah, I'm good with it. I think it makes sense, especially if you've got approval from the neighbor.
It makes sense to me. I, I can't see. It's not a big deal.
I'll make a motion to approve that request.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries 5 to 2.
Who are the two? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Next off is our work session covering the draft zoning map analysis.
Yes. Um, hopefully y'all have all had a chance to look at this. As you stated, this is our draft zoning map analysis. Um, we contracted with Safe Built about a year ago now to create this analysis. And we are bringing it to you today just as a work session, just to present it, get any feedback or discussion from your commission. There's no vote being taken tonight. And then we will take it to the City Council at their meeting September 23rd, also for a work session. Again, no vote being taken. It has been posted on our website with a survey for the past three weeks, um, asking citizens to review it, provide feedback. So let's, I'll try to quickly summarize the maps, but please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. So I'm gonna skip through the introductory remarks and where they kind of describe how they went through this process. This is a key map. It looks like some of the text is not showing up for some reason. But it, it shows, um, how they grouped the areas around the city. There we go. That's the key map I was looking for. So there's 16 areas that we'll run through. So map one, this is north Interstate 27. This is the airport. So again, you have property that was annexed into the city as R1 or transition, which became low-density SF2 under the Unified Development Code. It's, you know, non-conforming, and that's fine, but we want to come in and give it appropriate zoning. The majority of the maps you will see tonight are properties that were annexed, that are non-conforming, and they don't have appropriate zoning for the existing use. Properties that are vacant and have a more intense zoning than may be appropriate for the area. Or properties that were developed under the former code, where you could do a retail center in heavy manufacturing, because that code stacked upon itself. Whereas the Unified Development Code puts uses in their appropriate districts. So there are areas that need to be downzoned, um, to an appropriate district. So you have the airport. Um, further south, you have the Lubbock Business Park that's zoned industrial park. Area on the east side of MLK, south of East Kent, will likely also be developed into another business park. And so the recommendation on this one is to rezone it to general industrial, and then industrial park for that area by the Lubbock Business Park. And so there are four maps per area. I was skipping over the existing land use and future land use, but if you want me to touch on any of those, I'm happy to. Map two, we have three different areas here. We have the corner of East Loop 289 and Idley Road. That is vacant land, zoned industrial. You have on East Fourth, just east of Loop 289, an area that was annexed in 2023. This is north of, north of Luprino. And then on the bottom, you have Erskine, North Avenue Q, right there by the North Interstate. You have a lot of parkland, part of the Canyon Lakes, part of it's owned by the City of Lubbock, that again is zoned industrial. So there are recommendations there, are to downzone that vacant corner at the northeast Loop and Idley Road. You know, it's still at the intersection of, you know, two expressways, so we don't wanna take it all the way down to residential. The auto-urban commercial would be appropriate there. Having the general industrial to match the Luprino zoning, that's immediately across the street on East Fourth. And then taking those Canyon Lakes Park system back to SF2. Map three, this top part, this is just south of 34th, just south of the City of Lubbock Cemetery. You have an entire area that is platted and subdivided for residential, but it's zoned industrial. And then below that, at East Loop and East 50th, this again is more of the Canyon Lakes area, again zoned industrial. So taking this back to low-density residential. Map four, this is where we kind of get into the hodgepodge. You have East 50th and MLK. This is James subdivision. It's a mix. You have some residential uses out here still. You have some commercial. You have some vacant lots. And so those lots to the north that are currently zoned SF2 are developed, some of them are developed as commercial. Whereas on the southern part, you have some vacant lots zoned industrial. So the recommendation there is to go in kind of lot by lot and clean up that zoning.
That's kind of just like the church that was just here.
Yes. Map five, this is, you have the Briarcroft Office Park on Avenue Q, top-left corner. And then you have 34th and University, and 50th and University. Briarcroft Office Park, that current zoning is high-density residential with two neighborhood commercial. At 34th and University, you have a clinic, you have a retail, you have office, but they're zoned medium-density residential or high-density residential. And then at 50th and University, you have Plains Capital Bank on the corner, zoned SF2. You have an office on the northeast corner of 50th and University, and some additional retail, um, medical facilities to the south. And so again, taking Briarcroft Office Park to that office zoning, giving appropriate commercial zoning to those commercial uses. Map six is South Loop 289 and Indiana, and then 82nd and University. The part that's orange, zoned MDR, you have an office there currently. That's also part of that neighborhood commercial. You have some vacant land, and you have the lake that's zoned SF2 and MDR in front of that apartment complex, immediately south of those properties. And then 82nd and University, it's backwards. You have an office zoned HDR, and duplexes zoned office. And you have a little strip of heavy commercial, um, right there, east of University, north of 82nd. So taking the, the property to commercial on the south loop, both the office that's existing and the vacant lot next to it. The lake is okay to remain as residential, correcting the duplex zoning, although we will, on that corner, make sure that it has appropriate zoning for an office. And then auto-urban commercial at 82nd and University. Part of that was already corrected by one of the recent zone cases you approved. Map seven, 114th all the way to 146th on Indiana Avenue. North of 114th, you have some vacant land zoned industrial park, probably not the best place for industrial park zoning. And then south of that, you have some vacant land zoned SF2, but immediately west of it, there is heavy commercial and auto-urban commercial. You have, on the northeast corner of 130th and Indiana, you have the United Supermarket there, but the rest of that commercial corner is still SF2. And then further south, um, all the way down on 146th, that SF2 is actually a non-conforming self-storage facility. And for some reason, you have one cul-de-sac that is MDR that does not match the rest of the neighborhood. So on 114th, taking that industrial down to commercial, giving appropriate commercial zoning on the other side and at the hard corner, and correcting those on 146th. Map eight, this is Slide Road from 114th to 130th. You have a non-conforming self-storage zoned SF2, um, northeast corner of 114th and Slide. That neighborhood and that church on the east side of Slide, those are okay. We don't need to do anything with those. But south of 130th, that's where we have that mix of properties that are inside the city and outside the city, but they're mostly all developed commercial. And so giving those proper commercial zoning, giving that self-storage commercial zoning, and those non-conforming properties on the west side of Slide, commercial zoning. Map nine, this is Slide and 82nd, and then Slide and 98th. Southeast corner, Slide and 82nd, that's where you have Drug Emporium, you have that shopping center. The reason it's SF2 is because it was part of the planned development zone case for Lakridge. They left it zoned R1, and then put in conditions where specifically this area was allowed to develop C2 uses. Well, it's developed, and that's great, but let's go ahead and clean up the zoning. And then Slide Road, you have, um, a shopping center. Part of it is currently zoned SF2, while the rest of it to the east is auto-urban commercial. And so correcting that commercial zoning, um, in both of those areas. Map 10, this is at 66th and Alcoe. So you have an existing, uh, business park that's currently zoned light industrial. Immediately adjacent to it, you have another business park zoned SF2. It is just about fully developed. They were able to continue developing it because of vested rights prior to annexation, but it does need to have appropriate zoning for the uses. And then Upland and 82nd, classic example of non-conforming uses that were annexed. You have a mix of different commercial uses, self-storage. So again, cleaning up those, giving that industrial park industrial park zoning, and then appropriate commercial zoning on 82nd and Upland. Map 11, 66th and Upland at Marsha Sharp Freeway, same situation. That property, that kind of odd-shaped property to the east, uh, that is zoned heavy commercial, the purple, that is for golf, just to help you get oriented. You have commercial uses up and down Marsha Sharp, up and down Upland that have SST zoning. So again, correcting all of those. You know, Marsha Sharp is a freeway. There is already some heavy commercial there, so we thought it was appropriate to put heavy commercial there as well. Map 12, this is Canyon West on Marsha Sharp Freeway in Milwaukee. So this is what I'm talking about. You have everything at Canyon West, you know, Target, and PetSmart, and Cracker Barrel, and Rosa's. They're all zoned light industrial or industrial park, because they could do that. There was no reason for them to rezone under the former code. Well, now those uses would not be allowed in those current districts, so we need to downzone those to appropriate commercial zoning. And then same thing at Frankfurt and Spur. You have a lot of retail uses up and down Frankfurt. You have a lot of auto uses there at the Spur, and so giving those appropriate commercial zoning. Map 13, this is 19th and Marsha Sharp Freeway. This is the medical district, kind of a hodgepodge. You have the heavy commercial uses on the freeway. The majority of the rest of it is, um, high-density residential, because it was formerly apartment medical district. You do have some residential medical office, different type uses. And then at 50th and Quaker, you have a shopping center that is, um, zoned SF2, same situation there. It was zoned R1, specific use for a shopping center. And then you have an office zoned high-density residential. So going through, especially in the medical district, depending- depending on the use, giving it appropriate zoning, whether it's office or auto-urban commercial, or leaving it as the high-density residential, and then getting that auto-urban commercial at Quaker and 50th. Map 14, you're at Erskine and North Slide, just outside the North Loop, all the way down to Fourth and Slide. You have an office there, west of Slide, zoned high-density residential, a mix of office, medical uses there on the North Loop. They're on Fourth, east of Slide, north of Fourth. You have apartments that are zoned neighborhood commercial and commercial uses zoned high-density residential. And then you have a shopping center at 13th and Slide, zoned SF2 with offices zoned HDR, so cleaning that up to appropriate zoning. Map 15, Milwaukee and 19th, and then all the way over to Upland and 19th. It's all non-conforming properties that were annexed. You have several SF2 commercial properties on the north side of 19th. You have that sliver of SF2 in between heavy commercial on the south side of 19th, and then Upland, same situation. You have some non-conforming SF2. So going through, giving those uses appropriate zoning. Map 16, North Frankfurt and Kent. And then we have a corner at the North Loop, just west of University, and then North Quaker and Clovis Highway. North Frankfurt, that was a portion that we did involuntary annexation in 2018. So several existing commercial uses zoned SF2. At the North Loop, and I think I said east, west of University, that kind of triangle, pie-shaped property is just vacant industrial land owned by the City of Levick. And then Clovis Highway and North Quaker, you already have some industrial uses out there. So bringing some heavy commercial zoning to North Frankfurt, taking that vacant land back to SF2, and then getting some industrial zoning for the uses out there at Clovis Highway. That was really fast. What questions do y'all have for me?
I have a question. Has there been, I guess I haven't looked at every property, but has there been instances to where like, you know, zone case that we just had, the land use was, you know, light industrial in the middle of residential? Has there been cases where like, that has been brought up to light industrial to like, make it conforming, or no? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, not, not in that type of situation where it's surrounded by residential. If it were on a thoroughfare or an expressway where it was appropriate. I mean, we've had both individuals who knew their property was non-conforming, wanted to get appropriate zoning, maybe they're trying to sell it or do something different. And then these are just recommendations. None of this has taken place yet. But definitely, I know what you're asking, but definitely not where it's in the middle of, you know, something where it might not be appropriate.
How will it go if we're changing the zoning or if we're downzoning somebody's property? Will they have a say in it?
They will. So the city has the authority to bring this request forward to council. But just like how you have the 20% opposition, if you get, you know, 20% of the land area within the 200-foot boundary, the same applies to the subject property itself. If the owner of the subject property is in opposition, that could trigger a supermajority potentially. So they will definitely have a say.
But it's like somebody that's a shopping center that's already here, they're probably going to say, yeah, okay, no big deal.
Yeah, they won't. I would hope they wouldn't mind.
My question revolves around that too, is if, so if that property owner doesn't want it to be downzoned, what is their process?
They, I would encourage them to, you know, send in written opposition, come and speak to the P&amp;Z or council when we have those hearings for those zone changes.
I don't like that. I mean, just for looking for feedback, like, that seems like a overreach. To me.
A recipe for a lot of feedback.
Well, that, but also like, if you, if you just don't know, potentially, we see a lot of people who don't really know how to do the process.
Right.
And if they just missed it or didn't understand it or whatever, I can see a lot of headache coming from that.
Well, this is one, I know that when we went through the UDC and had to come up to this, this was one of the ones that we knew that we had to look at some of this, and hopefully that most of it be amenable to people to come in to do it with understanding. I think explanations, thorough explanations would go a long way.
Yes.
When you give the notification, can you not include the process? They have an issue with it?
I mean, you can, but I just think that's, if they don't show up, they don't do the process, and you downzone their property, like, I don't know. That seems overreaching to me.
How often is this done? Have we done it since the adoption of the UDC?
No.
No.
This was coming about because of the UDC. One of the recommendations that we had was to, to do this, to look at it, because we knew there was hodgepodge's coming around. And like she said, a lot of it came back through stuff that was annexed before and just looking at it, knowing that there were going to be issues. So this has been coming for a while.
Yes. This, this was planned, you know, once we got the comprehensive plan adopted in 2018, then we were going to do the Unified Development Code, which we completed in 2023. This was kind of the last piece of the puzzle to do a citywide review of the zoning. No, the typically, the city does not typically bring forward zone changes of other people's property unless there's a specific reason and it is in the public interest. It is very rare. The last time I remember us doing it was probably seven years ago, and we tried to rezone Briar Croft Office Park. And at that time, the zoning was just, everyone had their own conditions and specific uses, and no one really wanted to let go of anything. But now it's, you know, they're all high-density residential for the most part. So it really needs some consistent zoning there.
So let's say, you know, they oppose. Is this all happening together? Or like, is this going to be like, you know, each map is one?
We're going to take council direction on that. We've thought we could do it either way. We could take all of the recommendations for the entire city all in one go. We could go map by map and have the 16 different areas. We're probably just gonna, I mean, any feedback you have on that and any feedback council has on that, we're happy to hear. Obviously, if we do all of the city all at once, we'll probably do the alternative notification process like we did under, when we did the Unified Development Code versus sending letters to 101,000 parcels.
I feel like this should be taken into like, small bits in order to educate, like, you know, the people that might not want to downsize their zoning. Or downgrade their zoning. That way you make sure everybody gets, you know, the letter and everybody is, knows what's going on. Rather than just put it all together and want a package.
And this is going to be one that goes to us and the city council, correct?
Yes.
So this is your recommendation. Do we take any action tonight, or is it purely just talking about it?
Just talking about it, yeah.
What happens next? Walk me through the process moving forward.
So our consultants, Safe Built, will actually be here on the 23rd at that council meeting. They will give a presentation during a work session to council going over this analysis. And then my expectation is that council will give staff direction on how they want us to proceed. If there are other areas they weren't studied or included in our, in the recommendation, final recommendation, and how they want us to go about with the actual rezoning.
Okay. And let's just say they said, yes, we want to keep moving forward with this hypothetically. What happens next?
So we will, we'll start bringing forward zone change requests to this commission first. It definitely won't be October. You know, that would be too soon. Council may want us to wait, get through the holidays, November, December, and bring it in January. They may say, get on it and bring it in November, so.
We're going to let Tanner off the hook on this?
That's right, he rolls off.
I think that's unacceptable. We need to do this in December, sure.
I think everyone, you know, this is kind of everyone's first opportunity seeing it. It's been on the website for only three weeks. I think everyone's going to want a chance to study it a little more, give us more direction. My expectation is have time to study it, get through the holidays, come back in January, and let's move forward with it.
Thank you. Are we able to go to the city, city council work sessions if we come in to listen to the?
If, yes, I mean, it's open to the public, so yes, you're absolutely able to come. Now, if you come as a, if there's a quorum of you there, and the council sees that there's a quorum of you there, and then they start asking you questions, then ask, have you come up? Because that's what a work session is, right? It is an ability to sit there and have discussion with staff, have discussion with other parties that the council would like to discuss it with. It's not necessarily just a, it's not a public hearing. So if y'all are there and you think that there's going to be a quorum that's going to be there, then let us know, and we will simply post it as a potential meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. And then we're fine. I don't have to worry about the fact that there's a quorum to be there.
But it would be interesting to me, not, not discounting you, but to hear, hear from the consultant, so.
And, and of course, it'll be, it'll be broadcast.
It'll be online, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So you'll be able to watch it remotely if you can't be here in person. But if you, if you think you're going to be here in person, then please let Kristin know. Because unfortunately, I have had to ask people to leave meetings because we didn't have, and that's always fun with a council member, to ask them to leave a meeting when we don't have it posted, but.
Okay, that's just a question. And like I said, I don't know if anybody else was, but I'm thinking. Maybe just watch it online.
Just pull us like you do on a regular meeting to see if we're going to be here.
I just, I want to bring up one more thing as well. We did post this on the website. We also have a survey, so if you guys are starting to get people asking questions, please direct them to the website. There is a survey that we're asking for people to take to give feedback or anything. So there is a survey on the website as well. Just wanted to make sure.
So you're saying.
Can you maybe shoot us a link for the survey?
Your intent is to file for rezoning on all these parcels and not send a written notice to the land owner?
Not necessarily. You know, if we were to take it all in one go, probably not, because that's 101,000 letters. But if we, if we break it up, I mean, we, yes, we could potentially do the notification.
But if you're going to break it up, are you going to break it up into 16 meetings or four meetings? I mean, it's still, it's still.
I just have 16 zone cases on my agenda.
I'm just going to, you're going to, you know, most people might not have a problem with it, but you're going to run across, and 101,000 parcels, you're going to run across somebody who's really pissed off that you didn't let them know you rezoned Grandma's house. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, and, and, I mean, we would have to give, I mean, we're required to give notice, legal notice of some kind. And, and your, your suggestion that it goes to each individual parcel is well-taken. And, and almost always, my, my preference on those. But really, what the alternative notice that we've done in the past was for regulations that apply across the entire city, there are changes to the UDC that apply to every zone everywhere throughout the city. Now, the state law has changed to where we actually don't have to send out, because our, at the time, we had to give, we would have to give notice to everybody within the city. And that's why we, there was an alternative notice process. Normal procedure for this would be to give notice to each individual property owner, and that is, would be a consideration in how big and how much. And you're absolutely right, this could take a considerable period of time. And, you know, that's something that staff and their resources and council and you and everybody else's resources wants to take into consideration. I'm not, Kristin and I haven't talked about it, so I might be speaking a little out of term, but I don't know how you could do all of this, all of them at once.
The way I'm picturing in my head, like, the full room will be like, full, and then people will be outside the door.
I think, I think it'd be, I think it'd be bigger, I think it'd be bigger than that. I think it'd be started, yeah.
Because you're going to have people that aren't involved in it, that don't understand it, are going to be coming in and talking about something that's not even involved in it.
So maybe that. So this process is going to require us to vote on each 101,000 parcels?
No, I'm sorry. So that was just, the 101,000 is, give or take, the number of parcels within the entire city. So if we were.
On this, on this change, how many different zone cases are there going to be?
Depends on how we break it up. Minimum 16, probably.
So you're not going to take each individual property?
No.
It's going to say, it's going to be that group.
Like this, you know, on the map currently, that North Frankfurt stretch, we might take that all as one case.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, I'm just trying to figure out how much of a beating this is going to be.
And of course, I guess, I guess.
And when you're 10 years old.
I think part of it is, it's really not going to be our call. It's city council's call.
True, but you'll make a recommendation.
It has to come to you first.
We only make a recommendation.
Yes, has to come to you first.
I know I'm stuck on this, but my recommendation potentially could be for the downzoning, that that person has to opt in, that property owner has to opt in to downzone. And if they don't, then it doesn't happen. Just feedback.
I appreciate that.
I think specifically as it relates to especially vacant land parcels, that's definitely going to be a big consideration. I'm trying to think if it's occupied, how big of a deal it is. I guess today, we saw that. We saw something that was occupied, that they were trying to rezone. So it could affect them too, mainly, mainly just residential, I'm sure.
Vacant land, I can see that because if you, if you rezone, if you rezone something, that downzoned it, now it's not compliant. Well, it's just not compliant until they do something else.
Right. It's kind of like you got your transitional, or somebody you brought in, they're, they're still, they're still able to do what they're doing as long as it's continual.
This won't change the legal non-conforming of just of what's going on. If the vacant land is going to be the big, where it's not being used, it's going to be the big.
This is not, this is not a taking, where you go like, close the business because you don't.
And then really, but if it comes in and if it was something you downzoned at SF2 and it was vacant land and they hadn't done it, then they can still come.
Sure.
Well, but it might have been heavy commercial before. And they thought they owned a piece of commercial land, and all of a sudden, we rezone it on them to a house lot. And they go, oh, wait, I have this listed for sale or under contract, and now you changed the game on me. That's what we've got to be cautious of, right? Or vice versa, for that matter.
Well, not everybody's going to be happy, no matter which way you go, so.
Yeah, amen.
Okay, it is 7:47, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.